Suggested, Dr. Markley, correct that we're going to skip item C.
We can do that next month.
At our next meeting. And it's been suggested we go back to item A, the budget request item, and go back through that. I think some questions have been asked. It has been suggested that we...
What I'd like to do with board's permission, I'll go through each of these individually. And if you have questions, we'll stop and we'll give you information on that. And then we'll do it in two parts. We'll do it in operating and then we'll talk about cap. And so one of them, at that point, the board wants to abstract, delete, divide, decrease, decrease. That becomes sort of your area to do that. So, with board's permission, we'll work through those. The first one, driver's ed. This follows in the unfunded name day stimulus. We have to do this because the state says we must teach driver's ed.
Now, our hope is that in the budget process, that the state will pick up this cost, mitigate this cost, or allow us to charge for it at some point. And if that's the case, that's $300,000 that we could then use for other identified priorities. So, questions about the driver's ed portion? And that's a $349,000 line item.
And we won't know that until the state adopts its budget?
Correct. And hopefully, when we see their preliminary budget, at sometime at the end of May, we'll have an idea. Because if it's usually if it's in the House budget and the Senate budget, they'll make it through to the final budget.
What page is that? I was trying to get in and...
It's like next to the last.
It's A.
Just scroll down, I think.
Yeah, it's approximately page eight. Item two, teacher pay raise. This is based on the governor's budget. Again, it's one of those items that's really a non-negotiable in funding. The governor's budget increases the starting pay for teachers from the current $33,000 to $35,000. Everything I'm hearing on the legislative side, I don't anticipate this changing. It may go up or down a little bit, but there's going to be an increase in the base pay for teachers based on everything that we're hearing. So what that means is if we pay those teachers with local funds, that's going to be an increased cost for us. Additionally, we pay a supplement on top of the base salary. So that means that our cost for the supplement is going to go up. So that $584,000 is another one of those salary items that's really not a... You as a board don't have a lot of flexibility there. If the state increases the pay, that's going to be an increase in our local budget to be able to compensate that.
Is it also safe? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Is it also fair to say that that particular line item, if it comes through, is generally taps the local funds because the higher paid folks are generally in the state budget? Is that right?
This is the calculation of local. It doesn't include the amount that would also increase in state budget.
Okay, thank you.
Next, board salary increase. We're anticipating about, I think, a 2% increase in teacher pay. Board salary is tied to teacher pay. If teacher pay goes up, board salary goes up, 2%. That's a whopping $1,500 line. School administrators. This is again one that we're not proposing a pay raise for principals, but there's legislation out there right now to include in the governor's budget that includes a 3% pay raise for administrators.
The governor's plan included 2%, but one of the bills under consideration in legislature is for 3%. Has to do with the changes last year in the teacher pay scale. Currently, the teacher pay scale is higher than the school administrator pay scale, and it's to provide equity for that.
So this means that anybody, any administrators that we pay with local dollars, that will impact us. So again, these are the local dollar impacts of that, and that's $90,000. Other employees. We don't know what they're going to do for non-teacher employees or other state employees. Last year, that was a $1,000 increase for state employees. So, I think that, and based on what the governor's budget looks like, we had to put in a number here as a projection, and that's the $1,000. And that's a $382,000 line item. If that doesn't come to fruition, or it's $500,000, then those are dollars that would allow us to go deeper on our priority list. Health insurance. We're anticipating an increase of 5% in the state health plan. That's a $162,000 increase. Retirement rate change. An estimated 5% increase from the current 15.2 to 15.97. That's a $267,000 increase. So I would tell you that from driver's education to retirement rate increase, which is a multimillion dollar line item, those are things that you really have no... You can't change. All you can hope for is that the budget picks up a larger share of that, which will allow us to go deeper on priority. So before I move on, questions there? And this becomes sort of the problem we have annually when we're looking at our budget. A lot of what we talk about in increases are increases we have no control over. When the state increases something, oftentimes, there's a corresponding local increase that goes with that. If they say the retirement rate goes up, we don't have a choice. We have to fund that. Growth funding. We are concerned that there's no provision to fund growth in the statutes anymore. So, the governor's budget includes some growth, but we don't know what will happen with that final budget. And so we have to be able to address the increase in growth in our students. And so that would be nine certified teachers if the governor's budget fails or the House budget doesn't increase, doesn't fund that growth. That's one that I would tell you, I would anticipate that the legislature will fund growth. So that's $400,000 that we have budgeted, but will probably come back to us to allow us to handle some other priorities. But until I see an actual budget, I've got to prepare for worst case. Make sense?
So if that is not in there, and this were not in the budget, it would affect increased classroom sizes for those areas?
Potentially, yes.
Okay.
Mary Hazel, anything you want to add there?
Well, just for the second line item, because they both say teachers for growth, but the second part, the 337, that's growth that we experienced mid-year this year, and we received additional state funds that if growth is not funded for next year, we would lose. So the first part was actually nine new positions that we would anticipate hiring. The other would be to maintain positions we already have. And in my mind, that was two different decisions the board might make on how you would handle both of those, so we separated them.
So again, that's really not another one that we have control over. We have to, we want to maintain what we have and be able to address the additional students coming in. School net access. The state charges us $3 per pupil to use the state system. That's one of those costs that's sort of a non-negotiable for us. We've got to have it. Anything you want to add to that one, LaShawn?
It also provides access for our teachers when they're awarding items that they can use to build formative assessments. And then the district also uses it as their benchmarking tool. In the absence of that, we really have no other alternative.
Yeah, we would have to actually buy something else off the shelf. Some... Now, we get into what I call, I don't want to say they're discretionary, but they're items that we've added that aren't mandated directly from something that's going to happen in the state budget or state legislature at this point. The first one is a supplement increase. The governor's budget last year gave pay raises, as we understand, across the board to teachers on sort of a sliding scale. Those at the bottom end of the scale got significantly more than those at the top end. But those at the 26-plus level actually got negligible or almost next to nothing in terms of a pay raise. So what we propose with this budget is for those teachers who are at that 26-plus is a 1% increase in the supplement for those teachers. So we have a standard 8% supplement. For those who are the 26-plus, it would now be a 9% supplement. Cost for that one is $120,000. Questions?
How many teachers are involved there?
I can look it up while you continue.
Okay. Teacher assistance. Right now, the current budget does not... I mean, there's talk about taking care of teacher assistance, but it's not in there. And if we want to maintain teacher assistance in our classrooms at the current level, this is not even an increase in teacher assistance over the number we have now, but it's simply to maintain what we have, we would have to fund 13 TAs locally. And there's another piece in there. 13 are in the governor's budget, which we hope would stay in there. There are six TA positions that we have above that, that we have, that we have to fund locally. So in terms of teacher assistance, if the governor's budget holds, then $400,000 would come back to us to be able to, that would be freed up. And then there are six positions that we are, we would have to pick up locally just to hold us even on teacher assistance.
They were funded in the current year with fund balance appropriation. We had budgeted more than that, but through attrition, we have been able to reduce, but we still have six more that we have not reduced through attrition. I did want to answer Mr. Shell's question. It's 226 as of when we did this calculation. It could change if there were some retirements, but as of now, it's 226.
Okay, thank you.
Utilities. This is going to be, this is one of those non-negotiable lines. A phone expense increase due to the phase-out E-rate. We've been using E-rate to offset some of our phone cost. That's going away. That's a $55,000 increase in that line. That's the central office kind of priority list. And a lot of that stuff is stuff that is what we call that stuff that we have no control over in terms of dealing with. So now we get into the school priority list. These are items that impact the schools directly. One of the things the board said when it establishes priorities was that professional development was important. And so we wanted to give schools dollars for professional development that they could use at the school level. And so we proposed to allot $10 per pupil at the school level for professional development. And there would be, we would not allow transfer out to other categories. So you have to use that dollars for school-level PD. That would be $263,000.
Is there currently money funded for development? This is above, this is to be added to what's already there?
Yeah, current professional development comes from, there is some state money. There's a lot of federal, no state money, a lot of federal title, what's called Title II dollars that we use for professional development at the district level. But there is no individual school-based PD fund at this time.
And during the cuts over the last several years, there was a school staff development fund for many years that was eliminated, and the local one was also eliminated. So we've been doing most of our professional development out of federal. And a lot of that was raised to the top and it's ending, so...
And it's unfortunate because that's generally the first thing that is cut when there's a downturn, the last thing to get back.
Yep. Second is really a small item. We do all of our summer school online through NCVPS. And one of the areas that we find our students struggle the most in is math. It's not surprising. They failed their math course, they're back in summer school taking math. So we want to provide them a little in-house support through a math interventionist at our summer school to work with these kids to try to get them that math credit they need for graduation. So that's a $4,000 line item. The second part, summer school math teachers. We want to extend the employment for some of our teachers to provide some credit recovery in the high school for Math 1. That would be outside of NCVPS. Dr. Smith, anything you want to add?
Yes, we realize, I'm sorry. We realize that all of our students don't do well in that online environment, so we want to provide for those students the option of doing credit recovery in a face-to-face setting at their high school.
Math is really the gateway math, is really the gateway course for graduation. You can't, it's that one course you've got to have that really that is the one that's the most difficult for our students to sometimes pass. High schools have asked for a fourth AP because of the heavy testing load. I did a blog article about two months ago where I just sat down with one of the APs at the high school level and asked him what, how much time he was spending just setting up, prepping for testing, scheduling for testing. And it was almost like for half the year that that principal was losing an AP because it was all focused on testing. And he was spending upwards of, until midnight some nights, doing some of that work setting up for that. And they would also roll over to our long-term plan to convert athletic directors into assistant principal positions. So we know we're going to do that once our ADs retire. And this would, we would hire the APs, and then when the ADs retired, not replace those AD positions. And so athletics would also slide into this. And we're sort of accelerating that process. High school testing support, just to provide a clerical position at the four high schools for support on testing. A lot of what that AP is doing is that clerical piece of sorting, counting, collecting, coordinating. I don't know if you've ever been a test proctor in a high school testing session for a one-on-one kind of session, or even at the elementary level. A lot of our students have very specific accommodations. And so you may think that, well, you've got seven U.S. history sections. That should be fairly easy to find folks to proctor for. But some of those kids are special ed. Their IEP says, for example, that they must have the test read aloud to them. Well, that's a separate setting. And some accommodations specifically says that in the read aloud session, that it can't be more than four kids in that session. So there may be, you may have seven U.S. history sections testing, but you might have 15 or 20 separate settings for that same subject. So just to sort of help with that is the clerical position. At the middle school level, this was a principal request for MTS support. And I think I'd like Dr. Smith maybe to explain this a little better.
Yes, currently, we are transitioning from the four-tier response to intervention model to the MTSS, which stands for multi-tiered system of support. And we had some existing positions that were in that support role. But as the funding for special education has transitioned, that funding source is no longer available to support those positions. So what we are looking to do is to transition those folks who are currently in the, I guess, support roles to the MTSS role. And I think, Mary Hazel, you shared with us why we're reducing positions and why it's actually going to cost us just a little bit more.
It's a little bit tricky. Basically, we had a different level position that was the special ed interventionist. We also had for many years a support associate for ISS. And we're combining those two into one function. But the funding source we're losing is the one at the higher level. So we, part of this is a salary differential between those two levels. And we're actually reducing six positions, but we're keeping the higher one. And we're also adding a position at Virgo because they never had a position. So we are in this reducing costs because to add these in to local funding would have been more closer to $300,000.
Questions there?
The funding we're losing is federal funding?
Yes.
And it's not lost. It is, no longer can be used for that purpose. This coming year, I'm not going to say this right, but we're no longer identified as having a disproportionate way of identifying students. And so that money is going to go back to the EC funding, special ed funding for next year, which is where we need it most.
Next is custodians. And this is kind of a complicated swap where we would like to... Mary Hazel, I'll let you work through this one.
Well, why don't you do social workers, and then I'll... Can we skip social workers?
Sorry, social workers. We would like to add two additional positions at the high school, bring in a total to six. We add one social worker position at Blair and at Bradley Creek for a total of three social worker positions. This is a critical need area for us as we see it at some of our high need schools. Freeman would be a prime example. They have a lot of needs at social worker, at that social worker level in terms of what they're dealing with with those students. The high schools also are dealing with a lot of these issues. We've talked about mental health and the needs for some of those. And so you're seeing that. Dr. Hall, anything you want to add there?
Right, our student support people are busy all the time. And as you can see, our counselors are doing a better job of categorizing the amount of time that they're spending with the children. And in fact, they're spending, having to see them categorizing their visits twice a year. But all the other stuff that they're having to do on top of that also impacts the performance at the schools. As you are well aware, and the information that I've been sending to you all over the past few weeks would indicate that our people are operating in crisis mode more than we would like them to operate in because of things that are out of our control. And it becomes almost impossible for them to do those responsibilities. There is a lot of need in our schools for those of social and emotional well-being of the children. And these are the things actually that our principals were asking for. They needed these positions. This didn't come from us, it came from them. They wanted these positions.
Questions on the social workers? And then we'll go back to custodians. For those who weren't here during the crisis years, one of the areas that got hit the hardest in terms of cuts was custodians. We cut those positions...
That's what I was looking for. I couldn't remember the number, but it's close. I think it was between 20 and 30 positions that we cut. But we also, through attrition, turned 12-month positions into 10-month positions. So not only did we lose a large percentage of our custodial staff, but we also lost, our goal was to get to half of the custodians to be 10-month employees instead of 12. And that's had a negative impact on what they've been able to do to accomplish, you know, their goals. So the maintenance department sort of recommended several different solutions to that. One was we have some particular areas that need some additional 12-month positions just to cover additional needs at Johnson and Wrightsville Beach with the separate site. And Sudbury Road, Virgo, where we've increased the program. So part of those are new 12-month halftime positions. At first, they were requesting full-time, but we, 10 months, but what we realized, we could do two 12-month halftime for less than one 10-month full-time because of not having the benefits. We realized we could get more people and more hours of coverage. So that's sort of the shift in paradigm, that we're having a new way to approach filling those positions. We also have a situation, though, at high, two of the high schools that have larger square footage, which is Ashley and Hanover, is they currently do not have enough custodians to meet the formula. They both need two additional positions to be fully funded. Instead of doing that, we're asking that all of their custodians go from 10 to 12 months, just to give them that extra coverage throughout the year. And then several schools need additional halftime positions just to cover, let's see, we're going to add one halftime 12-month position to several schools, Anderson, Murrayville, Ogden, Snipes, Holly Shelter, Castle Hain, Murray and Laney. Those are schools that lost when we cut positions, and actually, more schools than that. But those are the schools that have had the most difficulty in terms of being able to meet the needs. So they were the highest priority for the maintenance department. What we said to them, though, is going forward, as we fill additional positions, and every time we fill a 10-month with two 12-month, and we save money, we're going to roll that money back into this and hopefully add even more positions. So that we, we're not trying to get back to that number we had before. We're just trying to get back to what we consider to be adequate coverage.
Yeah, we will not get back to the pre-2008 levels in terms of custodians. And then also the paradigm shift we're going with halftime employees to save us on the benefit side and gaining actually extra months in the summer because two half-times will get us 12, will get us equivalent of a full-time 12-month employee.
And it gives them coverage at the time of day they need it, which is after school when the students aren't there to do the cleaning.
And yeah, most of these folks will be evening custodians.
I have a question. Going back to the high school requests with the fourth AP and the testing support, I guess I'm wondering if we're adding the extra AP, would we not be able to, would it not be prudent to see if they could handle that extra clerical work if we're adding them specifically for testing rather than adding two new positions at once?
Sure. The, both requests were high school requests in terms of support. I have, either one would work, would be, I think they would appreciate either one. And if it's a dollar case, if the dollars aren't there, knowing we're going to go long-term on the AD piece, I would suggest maybe the clerical, if you're going to do one over the other, the clerical first, because you're going to get to that fourth AP through the AD transition anyways. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. I guess my, I mean, my inclination is to add the AP first, see if that takes care of it, and then add the testing support after, or make it a halftime position, because then you wouldn't have the benefits that you'd have to...
Yeah, and both of those are more, I think that high school principals would appreciate the support from any, any way you want to slice that.
And there's some duties that can't, testing duties that cannot be done by clerical, which having the AP would, they'd have a little more flexibility.
Does anyone else have an issue with that?
No, I mean, I would agree with that. I think it seems, it seems a little like this is overlapping.
All right, so when we come to the end, we start talking about changes, let's hold that one.
And we'll make a list, and then I'll review them at the end, anything like that.
Was there another high school question? Okay. So now we're working to some other priority areas. Board scholarship. This is one, if we're going to grow our own, I think this one sends the right message to our folks that we want you to teach in our schools. We're willing to help you do that. And as soon as this came forward, Dr. Hamilton came to me and said, she wants to mentor these scholarship kids once we identify them and bring them, and require them to come back into our schools during their four years that they're in college to sort of get them ready to be Hanover County students. So I thought that was a great proposal from her when we reviewed the budget with our principals at their principal meeting. And then that next step is then getting businesses to sponsor more of these positions. We start the seed. Maybe we get a business that wants to help us fund these on a larger scale. We go from four to 10. Finance. During the budget crisis, they, when they had a vacancy, they did not fill it. And part of that was that we were coming out of a bond cycle. So that old bond was coming off, those projects. But we're about to add back $160 million in bond work. So we would like to add a support associate for to work with that increased load that we expect because of the bond. Mary Hazel?
Six, not four, but yeah.
Six, sorry.
Yeah, it's just mainly in the accounts payable area, just the volume right now, they're kind of maxed out, and to add that million invoices, it would be really, really difficult.
This is one of those questions that I had initially. If you anticipated additional workload and we're going to need another support person, why wasn't that sort of rolled into the bond request initially?
Technically, we talked about it. We could, right now, fund this with the bond, but we'd have to keep it totally segregated so that that person in accounts payable only processed bond, because it wouldn't be an appropriate bond expenditure if we didn't. So we had a debate about it, and it was actually a preference of mine so that they could work more efficiently and work, you know, and not have to segregate the invoices they processed by fund. But if it was the board's wish, we could fund it out of the program management and just keep that work totally segregated. We, it was just a, I felt like it would be more efficient if we didn't have to worry about that.
And just to be clear, this would be a temporary position. In other words, once the bond money was...
Well, we probably wouldn't hire it temporary, but if we didn't need it in the future, we could move it to another position. But it would be several years. So we, you know, to hire a, generally, we've done a position like that before. We would assess the need at the end of bond. If we didn't need it, we would roll it into another clerical vacancy. But if the board, you know, we debated it both ways. And if you would prefer to fund it from bond, we could... fund it from bond, we could do that.
It would be more efficient, the way you're, you're suggesting. And then also, you're not really adding a position. Or you, from what I understand, you'd, you'd roll them into something else that you'd be losing for an individual.
Once the bond, once we've finished off the bond projects, then if-
We'd, we'd evaluate the need. I, I hate, you know, I, I can't predict the future, you know, what we'd, we'd be faced with, but based on what happened before, we, we very likely would be able to eliminate the position at that point. I just would, if I, I wouldn't want to hire the person as a temporary because we wouldn't be able to get the, the level that we needed. We would, we would, we have enough clerical vacancies during the year that we could place them.
Based on our turnover, replacing this person at the end of the cycle wouldn't be a problem.
Right. But we could fund it from either source.
All right. Next here, I'm going to ask Dr. Smith to, to cover pre-K support and instructional resource specialist for health and PE.
Yes. For the first item, the instructional resource specialist for health and PE, it's actually a part of a larger reorganization that we're proposing. Based on information that we've gotten from the field and also our data, we need to provide greater support to our high school ELA teachers. Right now, we have one person who's responsible essentially for K through 12 ELA support, English Language Arts support, and as you can imagine, that is a huge task. And she's very good at what she does, but she can't be in 44 schools at the same time or actually even throughout the week. So what we are proposing is shifting the nine, 12 responsibilities to someone else who's already within our department, who has certification in that area. And so that person would be responsible for stay and then also supporting English teachers in grades nine through 12. But that would leave a gap in services for our health and PE teachers. And we feel very confident through a halftime position, we could provide that support. So that is their, their request there. The next request is for the pre-K support. We're asking to be able to shift some of the support that we're providing to our pre-K that's currently being funded through Title I to this budget so that we can provide greater resources through Title I to, to our schools. And we're asking, and you can see the dollar amount there. The next item is a universal screener. This also is connected to our MTSS process. It is necessary that we screen our students at the beginning of the year in reading and mathematics to assess their, their entry level. And right now, we're doing that in elementary and middle school, but we're using various programs. Those programs don't, they're not very reliable when we're looking at data points across programs. So what we'd like to do is to transition to a product that is more reliable, it's going to be less labor-intensive for our teachers, and, and much, much more efficient for our teachers as well. The next item is a request for some additional support in our testing office. Our folks have really tried to be in the schools and to provide the support to principals and teachers that they need in understanding their data, not only their summative data, but also their formative data. We are right now out of our testing office generating reports, going into schools, training teachers. Unfortunately, there are only four folks in that office, three of which have the expertise to, to provide that service to our, to our schools. But sometimes we find that they're not able to support our schools because, you know, if they get a load of books in or, or testing materials, then they're regulated to the, to the office to, you know, to count those materials out. So what we're finding is, you know, folks with high levels of skills are spending a great deal of time on very clerical and administrative types of tasks.
If you had visited our testing office four years ago, their function would have been to take the test material the state gives them, distribute them to the schools, pick them up, run the scores, and give the scores back to the school. And that was really what they did as an office. When Karen came on board as the tech, testing director, she has revamped the whole focus of that office. They still have the responsibility for, for getting, handing out and securing materials and, and running the sheets after the kids take the test. But what has really transformed our testing department, and you've seen in some of the presentations that she's done, is they now go to the schools and they're working with teachers and principals on how to take that data and make instructional changes with it. They're no longer simply a, here's the test, take the test, here's the score on the kid once they take that test. Between her, Elizabeth Murray, and the other folks in that office, they have transformed principal expectations about what they get from testing. It's no longer simply just a, give a test, give a score. They're really in the business there and working with teachers and staffs to interpret and use that data.
And, and so we've heard from principals, and they want more of that. But as I said, unfortunately, you know, if a load of testing materials come in, then, you know, they're bound to that office because they have to process those materials. So being able to provide this additional support would be, would free up specifically Elizabeth and Karen to be out in the schools more and, and providing that support to those schools. And I think the last item for instruction, there are several items in here, one of which is a K-5 writing pilot. We are really focused on looking at evidence-based programs within the district that work for our children. A lot of times you'll hear about research-based programs, which simply means that, you know, someone's done the research and they say that it works. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to work for New Hanover County schools. So we're focused on evidence-based programs. And so we are wanting to initiate a writing pilot within the district. The, the program that we're looking at that has been vetted by our teachers and the folks that sat on that committee is writing fundamentals. We are planning on starting with just a few schools and then expanding that out across the district because we want to make sure that it's what our children are going to respond to. And this is something that principals have been asking for since I've been in the position, been in the, in my position in central office. So not only in this current position, but also as the director. Another part of this is support for Singapore math. We launched a very successful pilot this year with Singapore math. We had nine schools that were involved in that, and we're looking to expand that to even more schools. What we've heard from schools is that they want more materials and they want more training. They're very excited about this, and the initial results are, are looking really good. We, we're starting this in our K-2 and with the goal of expanding to, to K-5 as we move through the entire district. Also included in this is the math textbook. This would provide a resource to our middle school math teachers through Math 1. Right now, as Dr. Markley has, has shared many times before, we do not receive very much textbook funding. And so there is a gap in terms of that resource being available to our teachers in the classroom, and this would help to close that gap. And I think the last item here is the social studies textbook. And once again, you know, we're looking to provide to our, our students digital resources that they can access that are current, accessible, and aligned with, with the standards, the North Carolina essential standards. And so, you know, supporting this line item would address many of those needs for our, for our students.
And what we've seen with our first digital textbook, which was Science, is that once folks got into it and started using it, we saw the numbers slowly increase to the point where now it's used as much as, or more so than what would have been a traditional paper textbook. So it took them a little while to get used to it, but we're seeing log-ons from home as well as within the classroom with the current textbooks, those that we have. That's the instructional piece. Let's stop there. Any questions instructional? All right. Next one is a risk manager position. This is one we've talked about in terms of, we currently contract with the county to provide risk management services. We would like to bring that in-house because we think there's some long-term savings here, particularly as it relates to workers' comp. Workers' comp is, if they're a state employee, the state picks that up, but we have local employees who we pay locally who end up on workers' comp. So with a risk manager, there are things that we can do to reduce those worker comp claims to us. Now I'll let Mary Hazel and John talk a little bit more about that.
And we anticipate workers' comp to be the, the main area of savings, but, but this position would do more than that. It would, it would work to prevent, you know, working with, with kind of crossed, crossing departments, working under Wayne, but with Dave in terms of safety and prevention, training, doing, you know, working with HR in terms of workers' comp, but also processing a lot of the claims in support for the, currently county, county helps us with our vehicle claims and our property claims and all that. That would be done in-house. And so we receive services from the county, and they do a great job, but they only are, it, it doesn't equate to a full-time position in term, in full-time resources for us. So having somebody who could work on this full-time, we really, the other counties that have gone to this have, you know, recommend, have, have benefited two or $300,000 reduction in their, their cost for insurance, you know, over the last couple of years. So we, we just felt, feel like this is something that we should try. Part of it will be recouped the year after without having the fee for the county. We, we want to continue the relationship with the county for one more year till we bring this person on. The county would help train. And most of what they do for us, they do in the summer, so we wouldn't have the position yet. So we felt like we, we needed to stay with them for one more year, and they, they would help us with this transition. And they've been very supportive of this. They also think that this would be beneficial to us. And so that was our recommendation.
Dr. Williams, anything from the workers' comp perspective?
Just that it's, it's growing, and the need is getting greater and greater as we move through this, becoming more complicated and, and more frequent for us.
So, so does that mean that you would, you would leave the trust for workers' comp?
Currently, the, the trust is our provider. So probably, as with everything else, every three years, we would do an RFP as the county has done. But we anticipate continuing with the trust. They've done a great job.
Right. So you would bid it out, place it with the, place it with a company, but you would handle the claims and monitor those yourself? Is that what?
We would, and we, we already do part of that, but we would be more involved in that. And we also would do the bidding process ourselves instead of having the county do that for us.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the fee that we, that the county charges for this?
I'm sorry.
What's the fee that the county charges for?
Four percent of the cost of the insurance. So it's, it's, it's in the $30,000 to $40,000 range. I didn't bring the number, but we would save that the, the following year.
It's, it's $27,000, but it, I know the county doesn't do the workers' comp, and that's why I asked the question, because I, I do think there are possible savings there.
The county does, did bid the workers' comp for us, and so they, the four percent is on the workers' comp and the-
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next is maintenance, trade, and painter. This is a request from the folks in the maintenance department. This was again, an area where we had, when we cut. For those who weren't here in the recession year, we, the goal of the board at that time was to protect the classroom as much as possible. So there were cuts in almost everywhere else except for as much as possible, the classroom positions. So we're slowly starting to try to not get back to the levels we were. We won't get back to those levels, like we talked about custodians, but to provide, to make sure we can provide some, some basic level of service. And this is one of the, one of the things that Bill has identified as a need, as a, as a trades painter position. If you have a question, I'll answer it as best I can, but I'm, I'm not Bill. Okay. Special education, support associate five. An additional position to provide budget support for special ed. Special ed is one of the largest budgets that we have. It includes state funds, it includes federal funds, and sometimes local funds. It's part of that. It's a very complicated budgeting process. And special ed is requesting a support associate to help them manage that budget as it gets more and more complicated, as there's more and more paperwork requirements to go with it.
And this is also a position that, that was lost, and they tried to absorb, and they, they, they lost several clerical positions. This was one of them. But I, I really support this one because of the level of complication of some of these federal grants and the documentation that's required. We, we just feel like this is almost a $30 million budget, looking at all their resources together, and we, we just feel like it, it needs, you know, full-time attention.
And this, this position can't be supported by the special education budget itself? This is a separate, this is an outside request?
Their budget is so tight because of the, you know, we've talked a lot about teacher pay raises, and the teacher pay raise hit on the federal budget, you know, because they, they had those same increases that we paid for in state and local last year, but there was no increase in federal funding. It was flat. And so they've already had to cut a lot, and they probably would, but we, we didn't want to cut another position to do it. So they, it would be important to them to, to fund it, and they could fund it from federal, but it would have to be at the expense of something else.
What happens with teacher positions? If the state gives us a teacher position, they fund the position regardless of the experience level of the teacher. So if I hire a 30-year person in a state position, the state will pay the 30-year position because that's a position allotment. All of our other categories, federal and, and local, it's a dollar amount. We get X number of dollars. So if it's $100 for easy math, and I hire a new teacher who costs me $35, it's 35 out of that 100. And if I hire a veteran teacher, and that veteran teacher is $50, that's $50 out of that 100 that I have to spend. So it's not a positional allotment, it's a dollar allotment. So anytime we, anytime the state increases the pay, because it doesn't matter what category you fund the teacher from, their pay is the same, it's all tied to the state schedule. So those, it's going to cost us more out of that $100 for a federal or local teacher than it does for a state teacher, which is simply a position as opposed to a, a base allotment. Next three are student support, and I'll ask Dr. Holliday to chip in as we go, as we go through these. Contracted mental health, contracted nursing. We, we contract both of these services from, from the county through their health, Department of Health. There are increases in those services that are part of that contract. And Dr. Holliday, you want?
One of the issues here is Medicaid funding. And one of the things that's happening is that the ability to be able to recover through Medicaid billing is, is, is drying up a little bit because the numbers, well, all of the reform of Medicaid is impacting the healthcare services so much, the ability to recover some of the cost is impacting these programs. So this is why the, the slight increase in, in those programs. I was visiting a healthcare professional today personally, and one of, one of the things that she was telling me was that there are fewer visits now to doctors' offices and whether it's Medicaid or, or, or personal insurance, because the amount that's being paid by the, by the insurance and especially by Medicaid is so, is so iffy and so concerning that it's not, people aren't getting sicker and aren't having issues, is that they just aren't going because they don't know what their status is as far as what they're, what's going to be covered. So it's, we're in a really kind of a strange period right now with our, with our medical coverage.
Contracted nurses, $75,000, is the increase. Is related to our existing positions?
Can I, can I go back to that?
Please.
I'm just trying to understand. So the health department provides 12 professionals. Is that what we're talking about here, into the school system?
You're talking about in the, in the mental health?
Yes, sir.
Yes. And the problem is they recover, that's, that's a billable service. This is not something that's, that's necessarily free. It's on a sliding scale. And the problem is they're not able to recover, to keep what we have, they're not able to recover what they need to recover to pay for those positions. So we're having to pay more for those positions because of what I just said. They're not getting the Medicaid billing that they need to do that.
So the school system pays the net cost between what bill comes in and the cost of those positions, and that's going up because the revenue's drying up?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Want to continue with nursing?
There's a new position.
Yeah, we, we are, we are, when we went back in 2008, we, like everything else, our budgets were, had to be trimmed, and nursing was one of those. And one of the things that we wanted to do was to be, begin to add back because what we're having is, is where we cut nurses, we shared nurses between schools in certain areas and some of the smaller schools. And in, in a couple of schools, we saw that we really, because of the need, we needed to add back a position. So that's what we're doing. We're adding back a position. We're not to our 2008 level.
We're not to our 2008 level. But we are hoping to get back there at some point. And we also have more schools now than we had 2008.
Next one is athletic type and changes. We have, we coming, we've looked at changes to, to sal, to salaries for classified employees. We restored the supplement for teachers. But the one area we have not made a change is on coaching supplements. So Dr. Holiday looked at coaching supplements across the state. And we wanted to make some recommended changes, not across the board, but just to bring us to a statewide average number. So, we looked at this by sports, and there were increases in the chart that was provided a while back based on each sport. In fact, some sports saw no increase because we were already above what the state average was. And so the total cost of those increases is the 80,000 you see there. Anything you want to add to that, Dr. Holiday?
Dr. Markley did a really good job of, of presenting that. But we really did want to get, base our raises on something. We keep hearing about they wanted additional money. We understand, I was an old coach myself. I understand you don't get paid for the hours that you work. But at the same time, we wanted to, we wanted to show them that we really did understand that, that, that a raise was needed, but we needed to justify it. So we looked at the state averages. We did a, a, a pretty good analysis on that. And like I said, there are some positions, especially in the assistant coaches positions, that needed to be brought up. Some of our head coaching positions were already there and already where they needed to be. So we didn't touch those. The athletic directors, we didn't touch because we were already there. So some of the higher-paid coaches were already there. But some of the lower-paid assistant coaches, we bring them up to where we make it worth their while, and especially some of our middle school coaches.
All right. Next one is the student support center that we had talked about. We have an issue that we see at our schools and with students who, once they're suspended, they go home. And it's not the best place for them if there isn't an adult there to deal with them. So what we're proposing is a suspension center that would be able to work with these students, give them a place to go when they're suspended. Now, facility-wise, we have, we have, J.C. Rowe is the one facility that we have that will be coming available in December. So that's, and it's also a logical place in terms of county geography. It's not perfectly in the center, but it's near that center where folks could access it. So we would like to move Pathways, which is currently co-host, co-host with Mosley, to J.C. Rowe. And then add in these suspension programs. We were originally looking at trying to run, start this program sort of small in January, after doing some planning, and roll that out. Now, I've got no problem if we decide we want to wait to do that and, and do a better planning piece with that. But looking at that, if you do, if you decide that the board wants to wait and do that in the following school year, I would still like to have the principal in January. So they can have six months to get that up and running. We would bring a proposal to you folks over the, sometime in the next six months of what that center will look like. That would drive the, in terms of what we, what that principal then goes and puts into place. So we think this has merit. Dr. Holiday's staff is working on this. Now I'll let him speak a little bit to that.
Yeah. We, we brought this to you initially, some ideas that we, we were asked and were tasked by you a couple of years ago to reduce our suspension rates and work on that. And we've been working on that. And we also began to look at how, how we best serve our program. And one of the things we wanted to do, and you all were very gracious in allowing us to, to make some changes with Mosley, to put some, some of the career pieces into Mosley. And we were going to do that presentation tonight, but we'll do that at a later time and show you basically where we are along in that. And we wanted to make sure that that was a standalone program. We were able to, we'd be able to get those two long-term suspension programs that we already have in Mosley, put them in an existing facility away from that program so that that program can grow. And we can eliminate or, or reduce the number of children that are not, that don't have any program once they're short-term suspended, if they fit into that and need something more than an in-school suspension and less than a long-term suspension, and begin to look at that. The other problem that we have that we're addressing with this particular program is a transition piece. We have a real problem with students being released from the juvenile detention centers around the state or from some other mental health facility around the state. And they just drop them on our doorsteps and don't tell us that they're coming. And they show up at a school and the principal's going, what do I do? This kid's here, last nine weeks of school. Where, where am I going to put them? And it's a real problem. So they work with me. We sometimes put them at Pathways. We sometimes do some other things with them. But other times, we just have to integrate them into the school. That's all we can do. It's not good for the student and it's not good for the school. So we, we wanted to create that piece there too. This could give us so many things. And it could, it could be so exciting that we could, we could meet a real need here in the community. And we already have a facility, and we already actually have some staff with the, with the current Pathway staff that we could begin with. We are going to need some additional stuff, as you see up here. But we could really, and one of the things that's been real exciting about this is, is I've been getting pinged from all over the place, all over the county, people saying, I'm interested in this. When are you going to start? I'd like to apply for it. So there's a lot of interest out there. We do have a lot of work to do. You're exactly right. We have a lot of work to do and to get this ready. But we've got the general idea. The dropout prevention committee is working on this. My staff is working on this. And we kind of broached it and they've been throwing it around places that we're going. And the community seems to be understanding this a little bit. Yes, there are questions about it. I will grant you that there are questions about it. Anytime you talk about student discipline, there are going to be questions. But we believe this has some real promise. Got work to do. We haven't got all the questions answered yet. We, we acknowledge that. But we think this has some promise.
Is this, because I think it's a great idea. I know we've talked about on and off this type of program for years. But is it similar to what we used to do as far as?
That's an excellent question. We had something similar to this when I was a principal at Lakeside. It was called-
You're going back as far as ocean science program?
Yeah. It, it was, yeah. It was, and it was, they were called the Guidance Centers, where you had, you had an elementary program and you had a secondary program. Gaither Lewis, if you remember, ran the high school program. And John Krakenbaum ran the elementary program. And they were, it was a little, the problem with that was, especially in the secondary program, in getting the students' assignments there. And I think I addressed this in an earlier board meeting, is that we think we have the technology today to have the tech, the assignments transferred electronically. If Don will quit messing with me. We can have, we can have the assignments transferred electronically from the school. Like if, if the child is, has to go from, from, from his regular school, where he's placed in this, in this suspension center, or whatever you want to call it, is a very short turnaround. Because then all really that the teachers have to do is to email or whatever we're using at that point in time electronically, send that to, to the suspension center, to the teachers at the suspension center, so that the, the assignments are waiting for the child when they get there. As opposed to, Gaither would call me up as an assistant principal at Laney and go, Ricky, you got to send me some assignments. And I'd have to walk around to all my teachers and say, y'all got to stop what you're doing, give me the assignments, so I can send them over there. And it would be, it would, it would be some transition in between that. And it, it was, that was a problem. And oftentimes, the assignment, the kid would almost be ready to leave the suspension center before they would have their assignments. And so that kind of killed that program. So-
But we would also have the in-school suspension programs, they would continue along with-
Yeah. The in-school suspension programs in the schools would, yes, sir, would continue because sometimes that's, that's, it's a different kind of situation that would involve in-school suspension at the school site. Usually a, a, a more minor infraction. Now we suspend for, for, for more serious things, but they're on, but they're on the street. Now we would, we would be able to, to, to take care of some of those kids at that off-site center. Now, there's still going to be some students that might have to be suspended out of school, but they should be few and far between with all the things we have in place for them now.
Because I believe, and I've been saying it for years, that if we had something like this, set up the way you're talking about, that when we had these expulsion hearings, where we go back and we look at these records, at the horrible behavior that has been tolerated, simply because I guess, you know, there was, there was no other recourse at that time maybe, or, or sending them home. But if we had a site such as this, where, okay, you understand that due to this behavior, you're there. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't, you know, you, you know me, I don't care what grade level it is. Certain types of behavior should not be tolerated. And if they end up at this center, which I think is a way to help them also, with the understanding, they could be there two, three, four, five years.
Well, but, but you're talking about expulsion hearings. And, and those are-
But I think if, if you have someone like this, it might not get to the expulsion stage down the road.
Well, the prime example for this school, when, I think when we talk about it is, you take, let's take Bruce and Ed. They get into a fight. Typical suspension for a fight is 10 days. Well, that's 10 days that you're out of school, that all of a sudden, now you're into attendance appeal area at a high school, because you missed 10 days. You're also out not getting work for 10 days. So if I could send Bruce over to, to Ricky's school for 10 days, he can get work for 10 days, be counted present. And we're also talking about a parent component that says, if Jeanette, who's Bruce's mom, comes in and says, my son, well, let's talk about my son, and we can cut five days off this suspension. So we get some parental intervention here, maybe a little counseling for the child, and get him back in school a little earlier as well. So I'm, I'm thinking for that, that's one of the prime pieces, I think, when I think about this kind of school.
Yeah. And Dr. Markley just, just described a real strange family dynamic that I'm not going to get into here.
Yeah. I wasn't real fond of it.
Well, I was going to say, I'm old, but I'm not that old.
All right. I'm just digging the hole all over the place tonight.
That was hurtful.
The bottom line is, we, 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 depending upon what you guys want to do, and, and Dr. Markley has been, has been, has been working this for some time. And he and I have been talking about this. But it's kind of what you want to do for next year. But the real thing that we need, if, if we're going to move forward with this, is we're going to need to have a principal in place, hopefully by January of next year. If we, if we don't get the program, and of course Colonel Hans is going to have to go over there and do some renovation to, to Rowe. But at the very minimum, we're asking for a principal for half the year.
My, my only, and I just don't know the answers. If you're shifting from Pathways to J.C. Rowe, you're redefining J.C. Rowe, so that some of these children have a chance to salvage rather than get lost through. I, I get that. And I, I like that. How many kids are at Pathways now, roughly?
Right now, we have about 30 kids in the high school program. And these are kids that have been long-term suspended from the high school. But technically, my lawyer here will tell me that they're really not long-term suspended. They've been disciplinary reassigned, which is what the general statute says. But just for clarification, they're, they're not in their regular schools. And they're, they've done something that, that the board policy requires it to be long-term suspended. And they're at Pathways, about 30. And I've got about that many middle school children there too. The two programs are different in that the middle school is, is more of a traditional presentation. I've got four teachers, a four teacher team. And they teach them pretty much like they're getting in the regular middle school. Because the high school is more complex, there are more subjects offered, and it's more about credit-driven and subject-driven than the middle school is. That's all computer-based instruction. And the two high school teachers there are just facilitators. They're certified high school teachers, but they facilitate the instruction the children are doing on the, on the computer. And so it's a different model. So if you go to Pathways, you see the high school Pathways program, it looks very different than the middle school program. Middle school program would look very similar to what you would see if you go into a middle school.
So would some of the cost at Rowe be transferred from the Mosley, Pathways?
The teachers would go there. The teachers from Pathways would-
So this, this amount is not the teacher salary included?
Well, this, this is the additional. These are the addition for the additional program because, because the Pathways teachers, we already have. That's not an additional expense. Those teachers would just come with them. But these are the additional teachers in the short-term suspension program and in the transition program.
Which are definitely needed for those students.
Right.
So, I hate to belabor, but trying to understand.
Thank you.
So, from the standpoint of, of what Mr. Hayes said, there's several benefits. You got the benefit of the child that's been, an attempt to salvage this child and keep them in the learning environment. You got the benefit of, if it's a disruptive child, you pull that one out of the environment so that the other kids have a more, have a better learning environment, I guess. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand the, the benefits from your point of view. Because as you heard, there's some significant dollars associated with this.
Yes, sir.
Did I miss anything?
No, sir. You did a very good job of summarizing that.
Mr. Shale, I, I agree with you that the other added benefits that I see also are the classroom teachers that are not constantly having to deal with this same problem. And the other children, who their education's not being interrupted constantly, that we would have a facility, and we used to have a facility like this, and it worked well, that, where they could go. And I think in the long run, because it really saddens me sometimes when you look at the expulsions that, that we deal with. Whereas if you go back a number of years and you look at this type of behavior, you just, it just grows. So if you, if you have a place, which hopefully this can be addressed, that, you know, you might could salvage, you know, that individual there, and then the other benefits to the teacher and the other students. But I think the main focus there, I, I look at is the, the individual that you're trying to salvage. Because with that type of behavior, you know, because we have students today, I remember an email, what, several weeks ago, where a student in the cafeteria, one of our middle schools, refused to obey the teacher and so forth. Told you, if you don't, I'll get the principal, get him. The principal comes down, you know, heck with this, you know, if you don't do what I teach them, I'm going to get the resource officer, get him, you know? So it's kind of hard when you're dealing with that type of an attitude. That I think it'd be nice to have a facility like this. And that individual, I think, could be helped. I, I just think it's something we've been talking about for years. And I'm, I'm glad to see us moving in that direction.
Well, I, I, but I thought that the, the intent of the in-school suspension program, I know, I know we've made significant gains with-
Middle school.
Adding, in, in middle school, adding that intervention. Because I really, that's why I really see that as more of a redirection, you know, to, to try to address some of the behavior issues before they become problematic. So I think, or before they become, they get to the point where the student is then suspended. And so I, I think having that support system in place is key. But I, I, I really think that, you know, we, we, how many years have we, have we had this, the in-school susp, I mean, I think-
I think we're on our third year in middle school.
And so-
It comes and goes with other years. It's, I mean, this is not anything new. We used to have a program like this years ago, back when I was with the system, and it worked well. I hate they ever, you know, did away with it.
Well, but I mean, if we can address this early and, and through, through programs like that and keep them in the school that they're, that they're in, I think it's a, it's a better, it's a better program. You know, if, if that program is, is successful, then there won't be a need necessarily for an additional facility. That's just my thoughts.
And forgive me, I had to step out and take a phone call, if you've covered this already. But the, is the, if you are long-term suspended, will this be compulsory to attend here? Such a, would it be considered a disciplinary reassignment?
Yeah. If you were sent to Pathways, you would go here?
Yeah. That would, that wouldn't change. I mean, that, that program still remains in place. That would, but that would be here instead of Mosley.
Okay. And then the curriculum, what's the curriculum piece to this? Is there going to be anything in addition to what is done at Pathways that we would need to look at in terms of?
Well, Pathways is, they go and they do, and, and, and they're assigned there as their school, which is, that's where they are permanently, which that will, will not change. What we're looking at is a short-term suspension center added to that, which would be getting their work from the school electronically with the teachers there, and adding the social and emotional piece, which we would have a curriculum for that, for those children. The other program, which would be the transition program, coming from either the JDCs or the other mental health pieces, which we don't have. And right now, we just kind of have to Band-Aid. As I explained to the board just a few moments ago, where if they come in from a, from a JDC right now, and I had a principal call me today, had one coming in from a JDC, just dropped on his doorstep, PO didn't tell him they were coming- PO didn't tell him they were coming, no, nothing. Here they, here they are, last nine weeks of school. We're already into the last nine weeks of school. The law says we have to enroll them. What do we do with them? You know, he's, no credit, at this point in time, what do we do with them? If I had a transition center, I would have someplace to put that child and give that child something. Uh, right now, I have to kind of Band-Aid.
Do, so do we have any idea of what that curriculum, what the cost would be associated with that, that-
Yeah, the, yeah, these are things that we're going to have to work out. Like I said, we don't have all the answers right now, but we will, we will have that, um, as a part of our planning time next year, um, as to, as to finding the, the best program. And it may not be something that costs anything. Um, I mean, some of the things that we, we have and we're able to use are, are, are public domain, or we already own.
Well, to, to Ms. Eastep's point, you know, we're going to get the school established, get everything set up, and then, and then we're going to determine how much this is going to cost us down the road, and that, that's the concern that I have.
Well, at this point, um, at this point, we have a general idea, which is what we've given you. We, we've got a general idea. But it, it's, it's up to you, if, and you all, if we want to try to start at the second semester of next year, be kind of pushing it, or if we plan it and, and are able to flesh this out all year next year, and have, and bring our principal on board second semester to help us continue the plans. So, we're really not, not, we, we've really got a pretty good estimate of where we're going.
Well, would it be rushing it too much to have it by the second semester of next year?
It's gonna, it would be close.
Yeah.
I would, I would suggest on this item is that we put the, we put a principal, a January principal position in the budget, contingent upon your approval of the program in the October timeframe, because we'll be back into the budget process by then for the following year. So we'll, we'll know exactly what it will cost, uh, for the whole program. So if, if we decide the program doesn't match what the board wants, or the costs are too high, we simply don't hire the principal. But that would give Dr. Holliday's staff about five months to plan this out and bring it to you for a approval in the October timeframe. So looking at this, and, and let me finish the list up, and then we can come back and talk about what adjustments we want to make. So the last two things are professional development. We're currently paying for this principal to pass professional development out of Race to the Top. It, uh, Race to the Top disappears, so I'd like to continue the development we've done with the principals. And it would have to, now, this is one of those things, when the federal money runs out, it shifts over to local. And then the last one is laptop replacement. Uh, we used to pay for this out of capital. It's a recurring expense, we'd like to move it from a capital expense to an operating expense. So that's the operating budget. So I want to stop there and let the board then talk about what adjustments we need to make to this budget. And just so you're a little number of plans, the total that most needs is six point three million. Now, about one point two million may or may not be in the governor's budget. So you're looking at, uh, a potential increase of about five million dollars if the governor's budget goes through the way it's currently, uh, projected. And at the last budget committee meeting, the actual decision was not to eliminate anything, but, because we didn't know what the governor's budget was going to look like. Uh, so if we're going to make adjustments, this would be the time to make those adjustments. So I would suggest the first adjustment we look at is, is slowing down a little bit on the, on the center at Row. But at this point, it's, that's sort of, we go back to Ed's piece, that's my recommended budget, now it's, now you guys get to, uh, to adjust.
Well, I for one, having been part of the committee, think that we have already looked at that. I think we actually, if I recall, one of the discussions was about Row and, um, you know, whether it would be prepared to open in January or, or postpone it to September. I think you have gone through, and unless somebody specifically has a question, um, I, I think we have looked at this, I believe we have, and I believe the time has come for us to go ahead and approve our recommendation, which is what this is, and go ahead and send it to the county commissioners and be done with it. So, Mr. Chairman, if you need a motion.
No, I, I would agree. Uh, I was just waiting to see if there's any other-
Well, that's what I was waiting, but-
Well, I still feel like, um, like I brought up the testing support. I, I just, I'm not in favor of adding, um, seven new positions before we know that we need them and, and requesting that. But if I don't, I mean, if I'm the only one that feels that way, then so be it.
Say it again, I'm sorry. You, you're not in favor of adding seven?
I just have a hard time if we're adding, if we're adding the AG that will be covering testing, and then we're adding a new clerical, full-time clerical, when the AP is specifically designated for testing. I guess I, I would prefer adding the halftime position and then taking it to full-time if we need it. Which was, you know, my concern during the, the budget meeting as well. I raised that question, but-
Oh, I'm sorry. You won, and I, I missed something else. So, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's, you prefer the AP over the clerical. And did I hear you prefer a halftime AP over a full-time AP?
A halftime testing support clerical.
She's saying AP plus a halftime instead of a full-time, is that what you're saying?
Yep.
Small concession.
Yep. I, I have no problem with that. I think that's-
And was that going to be a ten-month position anyway?
Be a ten-month.
Okay. Yeah, I can live with that.
Yeah, I'll go. Alright, I think we're, I think I hear consensus there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other issues we want to look at?
Does, my, my other thing, but I had a question. Does the, uh, athletic stipend changes, uh, take care of the postseason issue? Does not? See, I think that needs to be addressed. I, I don't want to drag us down, but I, we've got coaches that are going to postseason.
We have looked at that and agree, um, there. It's difficult to define, and I know this is how silly this sounds, but help me. It's difficult to define the postseason, and then how do you treat one differently than you treat another one? And we've looked at some systems that do it, and there are some systems that have done this and have gone back to not doing it because it created such a major issue. You're talking about football, baseball, lacrosse, soccer, sports like that, that may add a game to a season. And then you've got sports like tennis, golf, track, that have in their schedule already regionals and state. And they may be taking a handful of kids, maybe one or two. Well, do you pay them or not pay them? It got really complicated. We really needed to, to some time to study that if we're going to do it, and we had the athletic directors take a look at it. We were looking at it all over the state, and they were having the same issues that we were having. So, how to do that and how to do that fairly. Um, like a football, you're going to go a week longer to play a game.
No, I'm good. I, I'm, I'm not trying to drag us down. It sounds like it needs to be studied.
Yeah, we, we don't disagree. It's an issue that has come up from time to time, and, and we will look at it.
Could, could they look at a percentage maybe? Cause I-
And that's easy to do for a, a team sport like football or softball. Cause when the season's over, you can go an additional four games and make it to the state. But what Rick is saying, in a, in a sport like tennis, regionals and states are oftentimes part of that schedule, and you're only taking one player. So do you reward the, if I'm a coach and I get one player to state, is that a different amount than if I'm a football coach and I get the entire team to state?
Well, is the tennis coach receiving the same amount initially that the football coach is receiving? That's why I mentioned percentage.
Yeah, and it would be a percentage of, any kind of bonus system would be a percentage of your salary, five percent, ten percent for each level you get to.
We agree to look at it and study it hard next year, and, and bring back some kind of, but when we looked at it this year, it was all over the place, and people that were looking at it were saying it was almost in the too-hard box.
It is really tough. I mean, I can say from having kids play team sports and then kids swim, swimming's a lot like tennis, where it's regionals and states. And sometimes it's luck of the draw, if you happen to have good, good swimmers or a tennis player who's obviously going to be playing in college. It, that, that's a tough one versus a team sport that, um, you know, it's the whole team that's achieving it. It's hard.
Yeah, and that's one we can look at as we head into the next budget year and try to bring your proposal, if that's what the, if something the board is interested in doing. But let's take our supplements and make those step one by getting those in line, and then we can look at step two next year.
Okay, so where are we?
I, I do have one other comment, sorry. Um, and I appreciate the discussion and the example about the mental health. But I will say, in the, um, one of the meetings that I attended, uh, with you all, one of the principals said that there was one thing that was important to him, it would be more mental health support. And so, you know, I was, that was one of the things I'm asking, and I'm seeing that we're really maybe going the other way. And so I, I just don't want to go, I don't want to let that go. I, I feel very passionate that, uh, and I haven't been to all the schools by any means, but the schools I've been to, that keeps coming back, that they don't have the support they need to maintain the level of decorum that they'd like to have.
And the county has a frozen position, but they would only release that if we guaranteed the full funding on the position.
Eighty thousand.
I'm sorry?
Eighty thousand.
Yeah. I'd, I'd ask to have it put in there. You're going to find out from the state, you're going to find out from the county what you got. It may not make the cut, but I'd like to see it added to the list personally.
But we're increasing it, what, one sixty-seven?
That's just, that's the one sixty-seven is just to get, keep what we got.
I, I mean, I would agree with what, what Bruce has said. I mean, I, I think that, um, I, I'm not, I guess, I'm wondering though, could we have the discussion about, um, splitting that into two? I mean, one person, I, I guess that maybe they've looked at that too, but, you know, going back to the custodial thing, could we get more hours for a part-time, two part-time?
What, what we're getting though, they're just not our employees. This is what we're paying for with the county, and what we get is coverage. And I would get a one coverage, which would mean I would be able to say, like I do now, if I've got a situation where I don't have a mental health worker in a, oh, a mental, the, the site-based mental health clinic at a particular school, I call up Carla Turner and I say, "Look, I got, I need to have some help at XYZ school that doesn't have one," and they will take that person and put them over there. So what I'm getting, what I'll be getting for what you're talking about is a coverage of one person. It may be more people, but, but the coverage of one person, because I don't get to pick, it's not my employee.
Well, I mean, you're the expert, but what I'm hearing from the principal, uh, principals is it's a need that's not being met.
Yeah.
So I'm appealing to, to your judgment.
I, I have no, I have no problem with, with trying to go after the, the additional position. I just, the will of the board, but y'all, y'all have heard me come year after year and talk about mental health and, and, and how we need it.
But the truth of the matter is, to get adequate mental health coverage, we'd probably have to appropriate five hundred, six hundred thousand more dollars to, because we had this discussion, what, four years ago, five years ago, when, when Dr. Hickey first came on the board? About, you know, he questioned whether or not we needed all these mental health people. And he had, we, you know, we had the discussion, Dr. Holliday came and explained. We, in fact, I think you went back one meeting and then came back the next one to talk to us about the number of mental health people that you had, or we had here in the school. Uh, yeah, I mean, we got a mental health problem. But the fact is, we cannot adequately afford to address it to the extent we ought to be addressing it. But I think, you know, we, what, what Rick has said, you know, at least we're maintaining. And you see, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand just-
Well, and the change in clerical would actually cover the cost.
But when, when Dr. Hickey was on the board, he, I don't think he necessarily was questioning the need for-
Yes, he did.
-the mental health. No, he was questioning the accountability of, of the program, because there was some concern about what it was they were billing and were we getting, because they're not our employees. Am I, am I not correct? Because he, he, he talked about, uh, the, uh, the way the billing was, was taking place, and we didn't have a way to verify whether or not they were, uh, what, what it was they were billing for was, was actually provided at the time? If I, I recall this, discussion.
We asked that question, basically they're billing on the DSM, which is the standard, the procedure, and why don't you, no, why don't you change it?
Sorry. Um, I forget whether we're the DSM five or the DSM six now, but it's that, that, that mental health, essentially Bible, that they have the bill coding and, and that's how they do it. And what I have to, to rely on is, is my colleagues and partners at the mental health and the principals, who, as Mr. Schell has said, when you walk around with the principals of these schools, they walk by these, these mental health centers and they say, "I couldn't do without that." And so I kind of have to do some of the anecdotal things as well, that, that it's, it's doing what I need it to do. But it's also like Mr. Hig-, Mr. Mr. Higgins says, is, um, we got a real need and this is, this is helping. It's not completely addressing all of our, all of our situations, but we, we've got some issues.
I had a conversation with the principal last week about a four-year-old in a pre-K class, who they had to, because that child was so out of control, move all the other students out of the class. And this little four-year-old could tear that classroom up a, as, as good as some high school kids could, because of some of the mental health issues that he faced, uh, before he even came into the school. So this would be a trade-off for the cut you made in the, uh, clerical, so.
And that would be, that would work.
Alright, the last, the last one then is the Row Center. Do we want to just go with the principal and spend some time on the planning part of that? And postpone that other piece until we have an actual plan in place?
Well, you say you couldn't get it going by the second semester of next year?
Yeah, there are a couple of things. I, I, we'll do whatever you tell us to do. It just, we just want it, we just want it done right, and the facility-
What I'm asking for is a recommendation.
Yeah, the facility issue, the facility issue and, and making sure that we have it right, it will be better in August of sixteen, rather than trying to, trying to start it at, in the middle of next year. It'll also give us time to get our procedures in place and everything, and it will be, and it will be better. So I, I think if you're, if you're asking us what we would want to do in a perfect world, I'd like to have it up and running tomorrow. But if, if I, if I can get it done right, and I can get Colonel Hans and his folks in there, and Dawn and, and those folks in there to, to get us what we need, then twenty sixteen.
So that would take out the three hundred and thirty-five thousand?
Correct, and cut the principal recommendations in half to be, uh, forty-three, five.
I thought the, I thought the state would pay for a principal.
I can address that. The state pays for a principal, but because we currently have two schools at, at Mosley, we have Mosley and Lakeside, we are using that other position for an assistant principal. So unless we wanted to reduce an assistant principal, you know, even though the state will technically pick up the new principal, I need additional funding to replace that.
But my main concern is just as long as we're moving forward-
Yeah, yes, sir.
At the timeframe that y'all suggest.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The only reason we had, but, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The only reason we had budgeted a whole year, because it was a, it was an ongoing commitment. We knew that we, we would only spend half of that this year, so we could reduce that to half for the first year, but the next year we'd have to add the other half.
Two more social workers.
Alright, so we on, consensus on that one?
Mental health, I mean.
Alright. Are there any other items in the, in this part of the budget, the operating budget? Then I would ask the board, approve this, and this is the recommendation we'll send- send to the county.
Move that we approve it.
Second.
Comments, questions? Hold up a favor, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Second part is?
I mean, I didn't get the vote. Was it five, one? Okay.
I would say thank you. Uh, budget, putting a budget together is never an easy process. I would ask those, if we do this next year, if we want to switch from committee to, uh, committee of the whole, which we've done in the past, probably when we do our budget workshop and we set priorities, let's talk about process on what we, the budget process we want to do at that time. And we usually do that around the November time, October, November timeframe. So if we want to make changes, be thinking about that as we head into that budget process for that, for next year.
Can we get Principal Algranda to have a Skype? I mean, that way you don't have to be there, but you can still hear. I'm, I'm not, I'm not kidding. I'm serious. I mean, if you can't actually physically be there, it'd be great to have it, you know, available to you to be able to see the discussion. So anyways, just a thought.
I gotta say, that's, I mean, we, we do a lot of cool stuff in those schools.
Yeah, there you go, Miss Princeton.
Well, you know.
You gotta weed endorsements, you get to make it work.
We do FaceTime.
That's what I was trying to think of, was FaceTime, yeah.
All right, so Mary Hazel will make the adjustment. She'll send you out a corrected one tomorrow by email. I'm going to work on the cover letter that we put with this and we'll send that forward for your feedback and, and corrections before we do that. So...
We need to talk about the capital request?
Yeah, that's, that's the next one.
I'm just sending her to the right page.
Okay. All right. The operating budget oftentimes to me is a more, is a more philosophical discussion about our, our school philosophies. The capital budget is simply about what we got to fix. So this is the what we got to fix budget, or what we got to replace. This is the nuts and bolts piece. Uh, and capital, unlike operating, which is ongoing, are you, are one-time kind of expenses. Now, you will see two-year numbers because the county has always, has requested the last two years that we do it in, in two-year increments. They only fund one year at a time, but it gives them an idea planning-wise of what we're looking like over the next two years. All right. This chart, you'll see summary of, uh, capital request, repairs and renovation, always the largest item, is about three-point seven million. Technology is about one-point eight. Furniture and equipment, three hundred thousand, vehicles, three hundred thousand. So the total capital request is six-point one million. Uh, the funding recommendations. When you look at this, uh, lottery will fund about one-point five-nine and one-point-six million of repairs and renovations. That's really the only area you can use lottery for. You can't use it for technology, you can't use it for other areas. So it's always going to go to repair and renovations. Capital fund balance, uh, we, we'll do furniture and vehicles. You want to explain what that category is?
Um, basically, capital fund balance is generated from your sales tax refund, different types of revenue sources that might come in, um, or if you had some project savings from a project that closed out the year before and it, it, um, didn't roll over, it would fall into fund balance. So we generally try to go, to appropriate that the follow, in the following year's budget.
And that's generally a small amount in the three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand range?
So you're treating capital projects as a separate fund. You transfer money into it from the general fund, but at the end of the year, you have money you didn't spend and that's what you're calling your fund balance, a cumulative.
Well, I guess, guess what I'm saying is capital fund balance is generally, um...
Capital fund balance is a very specific.
It's coming from revenue that went into the capital fund, not the transfer in from, from the general fund. That, that showed separately further down. So if we, we came up a little bit short on our revenue estimates. So the last revenue source is general fund balance appropriation, that would transfer in.
We'll talk about that in a second.
Already there.
Child nutrition fund balance, they're an enterprise fund. So in other words, they basically, they pay for themselves based on the sales that they have. And so, they have a little bit of fund balance. So they're going to appropriate a hundred and fifteen thousand of their fund balance for a vehicle for them. So, uh, child nutrition, you almost always treat as a, as a standalone entity. So they're basically paying their own way. State equipment reserve, that's five hundred fifty thousand dollar state fund for tech, for technology. County appropriation is what we would get, this is the part we would ask the county for as part of their budget process. And we're, and that's three million dollars is the county request. Now, just to make it a little confusing, the county also has to approve the lottery request. Uh, they don't give us the money, but they have to approve the projects that come out of lottery. And then the final one is fund balance appropriation. We have a policy that says we want to have an eight percent fund balance as our goal. So we generally will have some money above that, uh, eight percent. So we use that money for some one-time expenses on the operating side, but we'll also use it on the capital side for, for some, for some of these projects. So we, so we can do the, get those projects done. Mary Hazel?
And the only time we can transfer from, um, the general fund to capital, except when it's an emergency, um, would be in the, in the beginning, you know, at this, this beginning budget time. Um, any other, you can't normally just appropriate from one fund to the other. We don't have that authority for the rest of the year unless there's an emergency that the county approves.
This is a budget, this has to be done during the budgeting process. So questions about the overview on capital? So let's get into the specifics. So looking at this, uh, knowing what our revenue sources are, uh, the three million dollar number for the county is not one we pulled out of the air. It's based on our conversations about what we think their recommendation will be when they, when they present their budget, when the county manager presents his budget. So we knew that three million dollars is going to be our ballpark number on the county. We, we generally have a pretty good estimate of what our lottery revenues are and the other revenues. So this is the one number we're probably a little more sure of than we are of the state number. And so, based on those numbers, that's where you see the project request. Uh, you want me to go through these individually?
No, no.
I can't.
No, I know you can.
Are there specific ones you have questions about?
Yeah, are there any that?
Now, I'm not Bill, so i- i- if some of these get a little technical, I'll do my best.
I don't hear any specific questions.
If for some chance the county request is less, then we'd have to look at which project to take off the list.
Can I also mention on the, the row renovation contingency, which is listed here, um, as a locally funded project, we had discussed that that would be, um, based on that, the first page, that would be part of what would be funded from fund balance. And until we had a specific plan of what we would do at Row that you approved, we wouldn't actually budget this. So this was just an estimate until they put together, you know, the overall cost of renovation there.
All right, this is the technology request, a breakdown of what's in Dawn's request for technology. Uh, I think Ms. Ladd and her class clearly demonstrated the importance of this line, these line items. Questions about those? Again, those in column one would be this year. Those in column two would be the request next year to the county.
I, I would just say for the benefit of the public, based on our conversation, uh, that, uh, this is critical. And, uh, once this is, uh, completed, our ability to serve students is greatly enhanced. So I saw this as a real high priority, just me personally.
When I got here, I think the average age of computers in this district was almost nine years old. And we've been able to bring that average age down. And I gotta say, she does it with a bare-bones staff.
And we had minimal wireless access.
Yeah, we had no wireless access when I walked through the door just about, which shocked me coming from a district where every school had been wireless for two years. All right, next. Uh, furniture. We had some interesting discussions about furniture in the budget committee. Gang chairs. Questions here?
Again, this is, this is one of those issues that I don't, that I, I understand is, is necessary, but I don't know that it's, it's, it's a priority given what, um... Yeah, at, at this point in time. I, I did not, you know, there were, there were a lot of, um, requests in here that to me were, um, like you were talking about the ga- gang ch- ganging chairs, um, that seemed a little, um, excessive or expensive, um, that we could have gone with, you know, uh, less expensive options. So, um, this to me wasn't as much of a priority. The technology, I've got no problem with.
Uh, more of the furniture hitting the volume here. Uh, vehicles, maintenance wants to replace three vehicles that are about anywhere almost twenty years old, fifteen to twenty years old on average. Uh, replace an activity bus that's twenty-two years old. Child nutrition wants to replace a refrigeration truck. That would be out of their budget, not out of ours per se. Questions about any of those? You can see the age of vehicles, mileage on those vehicles.
Can you, can you just briefly, um, what do we, uh, how, what's the disposal process for, uh, the replacement, the vehicles that were replaced?
They get sold at a surplus, at our surplus auction.
Yeah, I recall that. That was one of the questions that someone asked me. I just wanted to make sure you, you mentioned it.
Yeah.
With the county itself, what they're used to, like the Sheriff's Department and all of them, they would, to get rid of excess vehicles, they would, you know, public auction and they would auction them off.
Let me, let me ask this question. Uh, so when you look at your inventory of vehicles and decide what you want to replace, is it based on criteria, uh, is it based on criteria other than mileage?
Um, we have a lot of high-mileage vehicles, but a lot of it is simply on, on what the, if the vehicle is becoming beyond its real, if it was the maintenance issues related to that vehicle.
Right.
Uh, mileage obviously is a factor in there, but I would tell you, we probably have vehicles that's not on the replacement list that have more mileage, but they're in better condition. And I can, I can have Bill, when he gets back, give you a, a breakdown of what that criteria is for replacement.
That'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yep. And then you see budget request, what would come up the following year? Next. That's it. Questions on capital? Mary Hazel, you don't need, isn't that one you need an approval on in the capital or?
What we, what we're going is requesting three million dollars.
So the only part you'll be voting on would be the three million dollar county request.
Well, the first thing that we've discussed already is anything that is coming out of fund balance that would support citizens in the drawn and ready that to either the April or May, um, meaning whether it's, um, vehicles, furniture, anything, um, that we already have money for, we just have to wait on another, um, protocol to be approved. So we'd either approve that for the budget in the May, we can vote it on, or we could wait and do that till on our, it's part of the regular budget. It's up to the county to try to do some of that earlier, since the government gets started if they are in the funding, so.
So you need a motion to approve the three, uh, proposal of three thou- three million dollars to?
For the county.
A move that we, uh, submit a proposal for three million dollars to the county for capital.
I second the motion.
And so this is coming from, um, so you're saying the recommended, the fund balance appropriation is?
I guess what I would say is, to not deny that you're related on the government to ask the county to work, but in, um...
If we're going to fund it out of our existing fund balance, you'll actually approve that separately at either the May or June meeting.
We usually do that with revenue amendments. I'll ask you if you'd like to see that with budget amendment, or for lottery, we normally get revenue and bring it to you as we have the money. But sometimes you're approving capital during the year as revenue becomes available with budget.
Yeah, so...
That's what we do to get a budget and I would ask you to approve.
And we showed you the whole capital budget, because you need to see where that three million fits into the, into the whole puzzle of capital. But the only part that we're really voting on tonight is the three million dollar piece.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? Hold up a favor, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And again, putting a budget together is a, is a, is a process and, uh, I think we've got a good request and look forward to working with the county on getting approval.
Okay, next item, item six under new business. Item A, Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees and D.C. Virgo Advisory Board vacancies, appendix E.
Yeah, we have two vacancies, one on each of the boards, uh, and not asking for any action tonight, but I think as a board, we need to discuss process that we want to use going into that.
Changing what we've been doing? I mean, in the past, we've put it out, got applications and...
Yeah, we would, we will post, we'll get applications, but the question, during the last one, there was some discussion, do we interview all candidates? Do we only interview a certain number of candidates? Uh, do we go with that stock list of questions? Do we even ask questions or just work off the written material that's submitted? So before we go into that, before Tabitha posts all of that, I just want to make sure we got the process that, that the board is comfortably using.
Well, I don't, I, I propose that we would only interview, you know, depending how many people apply, three or four people. I mean, I'm not, I don't think we need to interview everybody.
Funny, last time what we, we ranked them.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know, the top five.
Yeah, something like, whatever, whatever.
Yeah, but there's also a procedural question there. Uh, that ranking needs to be an open process. I think we've gone back and looked at it and because it technically serves as a vote, uh, even when you, when you're eliminating candidates, that needs to be done as, at either in a work session or, or an actual meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct. It, it has to be reflected in the minutes how each board member voted and if you're ranking people, your rankings need to be reflected in the open session minutes.
So that's, that's one of the reasons why we need to sort of work this process.
Well, you saw the need because you were conducting the whatever. So why don't you write the guidelines and we'll offer suggestions.
All right, my, my question, a couple of quick questions then. If you have twenty candidates, is there a limit on how many you want to interview?
And that, because we have what? This is going to be in general because we have, what, one vacancy a year?
One vacancy for each.
You want it, one, one each. See, you probably wouldn't have twenty, but I guess we need to address it in the event you...
Well, let's say, is there a maximum number you want to interview?
I would say about five.
The top five.
Mm-hmm.
Five, okay.
I'm asking just...
Well, I think, I think if you're going to, if you're going to eliminate candidates before, um, you consider them technically, and you're looking, you're just, you're doing it based on, um, an application and, and a resume, then you need to, uh, you need to state that in your, when you post the, uh, the, the request, because it's, you know, I, I would expect if I'm presenting a resume and a letter of interest to be on a board and I get no response whatsoever, that's, that's, uh, that's rude, quite frankly.
Well, no, they get a response. They, it's just like applying for the county for...
I think you need to disclose it, to say, you know, we are, we are going to eliminate or we're going to select candidates.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with that. I, I don't disagree with that. I mean, I just...
And, and so you may not, you may not be selected.
Well, that could be in the guidance.
So if I'm hearing correctly, we'll put out a posting for what's, Tabitha, what's our typical posting time? How many days?
I, I think for this one, we're looking at three weeks because we would like to present them to the board for approval at the June meeting.
Okay.
So they can be in place June thirty.
Yeah, we're a little, we're a little ahead of the process time-wise now. So a three-week posting, the posting would say, "We're ap- typical, we're advertising for this board." Uh, the board will review the candidates and select five for interviews.
Have we ever, um, and I, I know we did this a little bit with the Virgo, uh, position last time. We, we, you know, reached out to the current board members to ask, you know, what it is that they need. And I, I would feel like that would be also a good thing to do with the community college, to ask them, you know, what is it that they need? Uh, I would like to start the dialogue, you know, what are, are the, the board members that we are, we are, we are, um, electing, are they doing the job we need? we are, we are electing, are they doing the job we need them, they need them to do? Maybe they need somebody who has some, I don't know, construction background or medical background, depending on where they feel like the college is going. So I just think that's a, it would be a good conversation to have. And it would, it would, it would foster the relationship with the college.
I mean, you're asking the college what they need?
Well, I mean, I would, I'd like to start the dialogue with the board trustees to say, you know, you've got a new position coming up. We're not going to, we're not tying ourselves to exactly what they need, but it would be good to keep in the back of our minds. You know, this is, you know, this is the type of board member that they're looking for.
We can send a letter to the board to say, we're going to fill your vacancy. Are there any specific things you're looking for?
And of course, we have our needs, so that's why we picked them, to represent the school system.
All right, so I'll do that. I'll do that with the Virgo board again. So three weeks, we'll interview a maximum of five candidates on the pool. Question, if we don't get five applicants, do we re-advertise? Or do we simply interview those who apply?
We go with those that apply.
Interview, yes. We don't, we don't extend it. No.
Okay.
If it's less than five, then I guess we just interview all of them.
If it's less than five, we'll interview all candidates.
Five or less.
Fine with that?
Agree with that.
So then if we have more than five, do we need a work session in order to make that?
Yes, you will have to...
Okay, and then we go through the, the process. Okay. So we would probably need to make sure we have enough time to build into our schedule in case we need that work session. So we're not, you know, cutting up against the deadline that we were last...
Right, we don't have a May work session scheduled at this point, but if we need one, we can.
Okay.
I want to make sure you were finished with that item, but I, I have one more point of clarification about the budget before you leave.
Does that cover that then, as far as...
Wayne, do you have what you need?
I think so. There's just one other, one other point, that there are other questions that may come up that we may not have thought of tonight. And the question is going to ask who makes the decision? And in the past, I think the chair has made that decision. And the, and the question is, will a board member disagree or have a different alternative to the decision? So what my advice is, the chair, if there are questions that come up that the board hasn't already specified the answer to, the chair can make an initial decision. The whole board should be notified. And if board members disagree, they can call for a meeting and have a discussion and vote. I think that's consistent with all the tools.
But what, what, other than this, what, I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, I think it came up last year, whether or not the deadline should be extended, whether or not the, the board should wait for a candidate who's late for the interview. Little questions that come up, the question is who gets to make those decisions? Is it the chair or the whole board?
Well, I think we just made that decision.
Yeah.
There will be no extensions. The time will be, that'll be it. And if they're late, they're late.
Including board members? Board members are late, they're late? They're not allowed?
Well, that's a, well.
We waited, we waited 20 minutes.
Well, we need to be careful there, because we wait many times on board members for different types of meetings. So I don't know if we want to specifically pull one out.
Well, you'd have to at least wait till you had a quorum. I mean, you can't conduct visits without a quorum. But once a quorum's present...
I think if somebody breaks down or they have a legitimate reason, I have no problem waiting.
Oh, no, I meant the application.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah.
No, no, I don't mean the interview, because we make them late often. I mean, they have to wait for us. And I want to talk about the board scholarship process.
Mary Hazel?
If, if the table over here doesn't kill me for bringing up this point, I just needed to clear...
Yes, we will.
I know, you're all going to kill me. But the modifications to the list, the attachment, I understand for, for the operating budget. But the request was less than that total. The request was only for 5.1 million, the request to increase. And so I wanted to make sure that that was still the request that you approved tonight. We were going to modify the ad list, which was for a larger number. It'll still exceed, even with the, with the changes you made, the 5.1 million, because it includes some of those state items. So I just needed to make sure what you want me to ask the, the, the county for.
I, I think ask for the 5.1.
That's what I thought, but I just, I didn't want to assume that and then have it wrong, so, sorry.
Yes, since we now are going to increase the board scholarship, and it is the board scholarship, and we do not have the teaching fellows that we interview, I would like for us to follow the same process, basically, as we do with the selecting board member, our board panelists. Because for some reason, it's, someone at central office took that role of choosing the students that we go to scholarship to. So I know last year, the person who was on that committee wasn't involved at all, so...
So in terms of that scholarship, this year, we'll actually do the small scholarship that we've traditionally done. We won't actually award the large scholarship until the end of next year, because budget obviously...
So we need to have a...
So we, we got a, we got a year, well, actually, like six months of, of real planning time to make, to put the procedures in for the scholarship.
And it will have to be tied to whatever we do with the dress code policy, with the gauges and all those things, so it's going to be very complex.
And Wayne's going to actually end up having to draw up a legal contract for this scholarship, much like the teaching fellows, you signed a promissory note for the, for those funds.
But, but I would like very much for us to give all those students a chance to make an application and to be heard. And we do find a process that will be fair.
Well, we could have a process similar to teaching fellows, which had certain things, got you so many points, certain other things got you so many points, certain other things got you so many points, and then whoever had the most points then could come and, came and made a presentation. Because I served on that teaching fellows for several years.
I did too, and that worked really well.
I never saw you there.
And then what happened?
No, I mean, I'm talking about the real...
What happened after that was then the students who came close to getting the teaching fellow scholarship, then we awarded them as the board scholarship. So that worked well, but recently, since they haven't had that process, we haven't been involved.
Janet, how many candidates do you want to be selected?
Pardon?
Just one?
The past, it's two.
Two?
Yes, we've had two.
If it's coming up, it'll be four.
It'd be four.
Yeah, so we'll do, yeah, we'll do two this year under the old process. And then we'll have to put in the new process for next year. But I can't imagine that a competitive, full four-year scholarship doesn't attract a large pool of people.
She makes some real policy.
Yep.
Well, that's the goal.
That's the goal.
Anything else to...
Need a closed session very briefly to update you on a matter. No action coming out of closed session on that, so.
Do you have a motion to go in closed session, pursue it?
Second.
Mr. Buller, pursue it to what, what's the number?
318, 118, 386, 135, 10...
Now I'll ask Dr. Holliday and Dr. Weller to join us back there.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are in closed session. We may retire to the...